Good evening. It is 6:03 PM, November 18th, 2021. Laguna Beach Unified School Board's open session is called Order. I want to comment that Member Bickers is not here tonight. She's following our protocol that if one is sick, they stay home. And this is only the third meeting she has missed in the thirty-some-odd years that she's been on the board. So, and she has laryngitis, so she couldn't call him. So, we are going to start the meeting with a pledge, which one of you will listen to the latest? Thank you.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Natalie. We have a report out of closed session, closed session by a vote of four zero one with Member Bickers being absent. The board took action to accept the resignation of a classified employee number seven six zero 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 one seven eight two. And this moves us to four D, adoption of agenda. Dr. Bor, are there any changes to the agenda?
I just would recommend that we move nine A after reports if possible, because we have some teachers who I'd like to be able to get home at a reasonable hour.
We would like that, too. Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to adopt tonight's agenda, moving nine A forward?
Moved.
And then Jim, Kelly, second. May I have a student provisional vote on agenda, adopting the agenda? I don't know which one, anybody?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. And all opposed, anyone opposed? To be clear, okay. So, motion carries four zero one. We're moving item five A, public comment, non-agenda items. LBSD public comment forum closed today at noon with one comment that all board members received. In addition to that noted on the agenda for the business meeting, you'll see an opportunity for in-person public comment for non-agenda items. And then before each information action item, public hearings for members of the public test five, public comment cards are located by the front doors. Please turn them in, and they will be brought up to Ms. Weber. On the front, fill out what agenda item or items you would like to speak to. And if you prefer not to provide a name, make sure you provide a unique identifier that the clerk can say to call you to the podium. When you're called, you will come up to the podium. And if you like, state your name and your connection to the district. When you begin your testimony, we'll start the timer, and you have a maximum time of three minutes. Our preference is that you hand in the cards ahead of the session begins. However, as long as there's a speaker at the podium, you can still hand a card in. And then we'll close public comment when the speaker of the last card is spoken, or at twenty minutes, whichever comes first, a twenty minutes board can vote and/or extend the time for public comment. If you don't want to speak in public or use the written form, you have additional thoughts after you hear about an item, you can email all of the board. We really do appreciate the input. We appreciate receiving your views. It's our responsibility under law to not provide our opinion on any item that might come before the board, but to only receive the input. And with that, Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comments?
Yes, Joanna Diver, you may come to the podium. You're the only one, so you're the, looks like the first and the last. Okay. All right. Okay. Try to get in between. So, mine, can I start? Okay, I want to show you this poster board I just put together. So, everybody can see. My name is Joanna Diver, and I'm still quite nervous to be here. I don't like doing this, but I feel very strongly about the position I am taking, which is no mandatory COVID vaccine for any child in K through twelve here in LBSD. I'm not here to tell anyone what to do to discriminate for or against COVID vaccination, but I boldly ask those of you who decide this, when and if the governor goes forward with the mandate, to please not mandate the COVID vaccine for all or any of our precious children here in LBSD in grades K through twelve. Just two days ago, Federal OSHA suspended its blanket mandate for companies with over a hundred workers. This was great news to us, who do not support any mandate in any regard to COVID. We hope and pray this will happen here in California, as well as should the California Governor go through Cal-OSHA, try to officially mandate mandated. There are numerous lawsuits already in all of the school districts currently trying to mandate it. Do you want this additional legal pressure? Each day, each week, new information is being admitted to, realized, discovered, studied, evidence gathered, et cetera, regarding this new brand, brand-new vaccine. This is why vaccines go through up to, if not longer than ten years of scrutiny, before requiring it for mass use. And this is the case with all of the childhood vaccines. They all took six-plus years before being required in school. This COVID vaccine is less than a year, especially for the children. And there are so many vaccine injuries and deaths already. When is enough? Fifty-six is too many for me to have heart damage. Each day, each week, oops, sorry. The CDC also just admitted, the CDC, which is mainstream, that, you know, people are following, just this week admitted that there are no cases, no evidence, no studies that show or prove those who have had COVID and recovered and now with natural immunity will still get COVID and spread it and kill people. It, I repeat, the CDC said that those who have had COVID do not get COVID again, and therefore don't spread it and kill anyone. And as in all of history, and with all of vaccines, with all that science is, natural immunity is far better than any man-made product for effectiveness. How did this get forgotten with COVID? I'm sure the school. We also do not have any long-term data, as well as thorough data on this virus and what it does to the body. Why would we take this risk? With a daughter who has had COVID in late summer, we experienced it. She was in bed for at least five days straight, sleeping and resting. She had most of the symptoms. It was very much like the bad.
That's three minutes.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joanna. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Clerk Osborne. There's no one else, right?
No other comment cards received.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move to reports. And we are starting with the highlight of our evening to our student board members. Which one?
Today, I'll be reporting on LBHS in Thurston, and Natalie will be doing the elementary schools. So, from LBHS, this already feels like a little while ago, but we had homecoming during the end of October, which I'm sure Natalie on ASB can agree, was very well populated. And that week, the school also had a spirit week. And last week, there was a national letter of intent day, which a lot of our seniors and even some juniors signed their contract to agree to play collegiate sports. Last week, we had our flow week, which, if you don't know, the Flow Club at LBHS stands for Fire, Land, Ocean, Water. And each day of the week, we had a special presentation about the environment during tutorial, and we had a special speaker come. Most of them were filmmakers. I went to three of the four, and I thought they were very interesting. And all of the fall sports have either ended or continued on to CIF. So, now the winter sports are starting. And there's an ongoing food drive at the high school that will last until Thanksgiving week. And for Thurston, Sports Swap was earlier this month, and I've heard it was a big success. And in the past month, Thurston also had a unity day where everyone wore orange to unite against bullying. And today, Thurston also had one of their learning walks where they hosted administrators from the district to kind of, I don't like, tell them about the school. And as well, this week, the school site council met again and kind of discussed and continue discussing their goals for the school year. That's it for those two schools.
And I'll be reporting on TOW and El Moro. So, at TOW, the Student Council is currently hosting a canned food drive collection to benefit the Laguna Food Pantry. And the Student Council has also implemented a new nudge for students each week to showcase ways they can focus on our mind, on their mindset tree of the month. And this month, they're focusing on empathy. Honors choir, honors choir, honors choir, choir, sorry, I can't pronounce it. We'll participate in the tree lighting ceremony at the Sodas Festival this Saturday, as well as participating in the hospitality event on December third in front of Santa's Hut. They're also happy, TOW is also happy to welcome back their fourth-grade geology rocks performances this week, and look forward to having the fifth graders host their annual holiday boutique to benefit a local charity of the students choosing. And finally, they're thrilled to be able to have their school volunteers back on campus. As for El Moro, their new Heritage Days activities are coming up next week before the fall break. During the two days of school next week, each grade level will participate in letter writing about what they're grateful for, make crafts, candles, and play games that children played when they, when our country was founded. Report, also, report cards for the first semester will be available for parents to see on Friday, November nineteenth. And lastly, teachers have been attending the EDU protocols training to learn creative, efficient, and effective ways to use technology for student, student learning.
Thank you both for your report. Appreciate it. This leads us next to the bargaining unit. CSEA Vice President Elizabeth Phillips on the work that your union does.
Hello. It's good to be back tonight, giving Margaret a little bit of a break here. Wanted to let you know that CSEA recently had their members of their election, or their executive board of election and nominations. And Margaret has won the election again for president. I think it's going on about eighteen years, something like that. And Thais Azizak was elected to the position again of second vice president. And we have Kelly Murda from the district office that will now be our new recording secretary. And we had great success with our Boo Graham opportunity to raise money for our CSE scholarships for seniors of all members. If they apply, we have enough for probably four, so we have a little bit more to go, because we have about six potential applicants, which is a wonderful thing. Our site representative meetings with the principals have resumed, which will be a great thing for leadership communications. And our annual... No, I think that's it. I think that's it for today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
And next, we have Sarah Hopper, who's president of La Boofa.
Yes, La Boofa has no report tonight.
Thank you. So, that's going to take us to our school resource officers. Or, I'm not sure, did we just have one? Fred? It's good to stay home when you're sick. And thanks for being here.
Good evening, everybody. For, looks like everybody pretty much knows me in this room. But for those of you who don't know me, my name is Fred Yolian, the school resource officer for the Laguna Beach Police Department. So, I'll make this short and sweet. There's two things that I wanted to announce tonight, the first of which being we are going to be doing our inaugural Cup of Joe with the SRO. It's basically going to be a community event that we're going to have at El Moro. First off, we're going to hit all four sites eventually. It's going to be on December second, after drop-off from eight-thirty to nine-thirty. And it is going to be a way for the parents to talk to us. We can do a short presentation so they could understand about the SRO program, what it does exactly. Because, yes, we get to interact with the kids on a daily basis, but the parents usually just get to see us drop off and pick up a wave and a high and goodbye in most, most circumstances. So, this is a way for them to connect with us, because a lot of times, let's, let's, let's be honest, the parents need a lot of help, too. So, it's a way for them to understand what this program's about and get to know us as their kids' SROs. So, we're excited about that. And then also, the holidays are coming up, so we're going to be pushing out some PSA on the city's social host ordinance, which has to do with throwing parties and allowing their kids to partake in particular activities. So, we want to get that word out before the holiday season, just to educate parents on what that means if they're allowing their kids to do that. So, we want to get ahead of that and at least educate the community on that ordinance, which sometimes a lot of people don't know about. So, outside of that, still have been a busy school year, but it's been a lot of fun. And a lot of more things coming up that we're excited about. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for that update. Appreciate it.
Any questions for me from anybody?
I don't think.
All right. Thank you.
That brings us to six D, which is the superintendent. Dr. Bor, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Lots going on, but I can tell you the one thing that most people are probably looking forward to is a break next week. So, that probably can't come soon enough for, for a lot of the folks. It's been a great start to the years. We kind of getting close to the end of the first semester, which is pretty amazing. We do come back from Thanksgiving and have, I think, three weeks, and then the semester is over. So, it's, it's coming up quick. I really appreciate all of our, you know, amazing relationships we have with our associations, as well as with the police department. We had a meeting at the district office, had our chief of police, Calvert, and several other folks there, and had a nice opportunity to talk about the SRO program, things that they're working on and some things that we're working on. So, really, again, appreciate the work of our team there. I did also get to attend three out of the four flow assemblies. Was pretty amazing to watch and see our students really paying very close attention to the videos. The topics ranged. I think the one that was probably the most powerful that I was able to attend was the one about the Grand Canyon, the Colorado River, and kind of how it's drying up. And students had a lot of good questions about kind of what, what we can do to address that. So, a major thanks goes out to Dr. Allman and his team, Sarah Benson, Dave Brobeck, for putting that on, and our partners as well there, Coast Film Festival. Pretty amazing what our students get an opportunity to take part in. And so, with that, I know we'll have plenty of other reports to talk about and through tonight, so I'll keep my remarks brief.
Thank you, Dr. Bor. That brings us to Mr. Dixon. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. As mentioned in last week's weekly update to the board, we were able to offer transportation, school bus transportation for high school students out in the canyon area. Pass sales went live this Wednesday. And as far as today, we have ten total passes distributed, and that's a combination of both AM-only, PM-only, and round trip. So, that's where we stand today. The intent still is providing that service after fall break. So, November twenty-ninth will be the first day it goes out there, and we'll continue to monitor from now till then. And even after that point, sales are still available, but that's when we intend to start the service. So, we're happy to do it, and everyone in our team is looking forward to the break as well. As Dr. Valoria said, it's, it's well-deserved by a lot of our staff, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dixon. I really appreciate that transportation being added. I just had a couple of questions. One, I got some calls about it. Is there any way it could be available for zero period? For the high school?
It is available for all different times. That's going to be in the schedule when you click to buy the pass. So, there's another email communication update going out this Friday to all the families. So, they'll be able to see the updated schedule that shows all the available times that we offer the service. It's based on what we have. Unfortunately, we're still in the driver shortage issue, so we're working within the resources we have. But it's, it's something that we are able to offer based on the ridership at this time.
Okay, great. So, it is available for zero period?
It is.
Okay, great, because two parents called me and said it wasn't.
Yeah, the rider, the way the passes are, is it's an AM, PM, and the times and stops are still to be determined, because we had to determine where the riders were coming from and the times to determine what buses, and if we had enough capacity to support that ridership. And as it looks now with the passes, yeah, it's going to be available.
Oh, okay, okay. And then also, did it, did it go out in Spanish also?
It went out in parent square, which, yes, it's transcribable in multiple languages.
Okay. And those people that are, some people who are, can get a free or reduced bus pass, we're told that?
Correct. Correct. They are eligible, just like every other student.
Perfect. Great, thanks.
What type of buses were you using? Our Durham transportation, this is home-to-school transportation buses, correct? For the ten kids. Enough, back to full capacity, the standard school bus, home-to-school bus, yeah.
One more question. What about the kids out Laguna Canyon Road, so they're on the way? Because I heard it from a couple of those. So, they're not off El Chora Road, but they're along Laguna Canyon Road, kind of far out?
I would direct any request, come, please come to our office. If they have questions or requests related to transportation, we would please direct them to come to us, because we would want to know. And then we would, of course, do manage that from whatever.
We could see if that would work.
Well, we need to know if there's a need first, yeah. So, we just direct anything, please to our office, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
With that, Mr. Colan, the floor is yours.
Thank, thank you, President Normandin. I want to share, so our district wellness committee had met just, just a few weeks ago. And we began by acknowledging, everyone in the room can understand that there's just been an immense amount of stress on staff and students, and just, you know, on their, on their mental well-being. So, at the meeting, we reviewed a lot of the resources that we currently have available for staff, be it the employee assistance programs and how they offer, you know, between various health and wellness resources, online and in-person counseling. We also discussed we're piloting a wellness app that could be another resource we could potentially roll out to staff as a nice kind of just tier-one resource for people to, just as one more kind of touch point and resource for folks. And then we have a presentation from Stacy Beena, who the district contracted with to provide yoga and mindfulness. Either training could be sessions for, for staff after school. It could be PD during a staff meeting to how they can infuse mindfulness strategies into their classroom, to actually coming and even doing some mindfulness and yoga for, for students during the class. So, that was great to share with those, those committee members, and they're, they're taking that back to their site. And then from there, the sites are developing various kind of wellness activities. So, from walking in the canyon to other kind of exercise activities, we're encouraging staff to kind of join them to yoga, to potlucks, and various gratitude activities. So, we're excited about, for one, just acknowledging that in this, in this time, it's so critical that we take care of ourselves first, and just sharing all of the resources we have available for our staff, as well as we kicked off our first District Wellness Challenge, which was, it's called, it's three weeks of well-being. So, there's so many ways to improve your well-being and health. So, over the next three weeks, we encourage to try different activities that can help you eat better, exercise, manage your stress, relax, and more. So, it's encouraging staff to make those healthy choices. And just, it's a fun way for, you know, the staff to kind of just collaborate. And we do about three to four challenges per year as well. So, we're excited. That's all we have from Human Resources.
Thank you for, for doing that for the staff, because you always have to put the oxygen mask on first, right? Before, can't help anyone else until you do that. Appreciate that. And Dr. Mayberry, the last reports from you.
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, as Dr. Valoria said, end of semester is not too far away. And the end of the first trimester actually just happened. So, so things are kind of in that wrapping-up stage around, you know, around the end of the trimester and then semester along the way. We recently had a pedal ed event last Friday, which was, which was kind of fun to see promoting our CTE pathways, which led to a couple of really nice articles in the OC Register and LA Times around some of the work that they were doing with our CTE pathways at the high school and around the county as well, promoting them. And then, what was that, the Boys and Girls Club Community Partners Breakfast, where we were, where we won the award, partnership award from Boys and Girls Club, really the recognition of a lot of the work that Irene White and Dr. Michael Keller have done around the social skills facilitation project, and working with them in the summer school and during the day and after school, and just that partnership. And they've really been a valuable partner, especially during the pandemic for us. So, that was a pleasant surprise. So, that, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the report. Make sure no questions. Okay. This brings us, we've moved nine A forwards, we're going to jump forward on the agenda to the information item from technology. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for the wishing, for those wishing to make public comment on up?
No.
Day on a day? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. And Mr. Morrison, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Norman and members of the board. So, we, I'm glad we have this opportunity to show you some things that we're doing in technology. Every, for the last eight years or so, we've always presented a tech update where we give you, you know, our stats, we give you the survey data, we give you the usage reports, and we give you the logins. This is not that meeting. We're not going to share that this time. We wanted to do that in the spring when we have our survey data back. So, this is, what we wanted to share with you was just kind of a little bit of some of the things that a student might see in the classroom and get, have you kind of experienced that and what that would be like. So, we're going to have, we're going to have both elementary and secondary teams show you some things that would happen, and we invite the audience to participate with your phones or with your computers, either way. So, we, there's so many things we do with computers with our students, but, and these are just some of those things that we do. We do summative assessments, and we do interventions, and we have CAI, computer-aided instruction. We do lots of things with computers. But we wanted to hone in on just a couple things. We wanted to hone in tonight on some formative assessment tools that we use. So, that, I thought that was a good focus, because that gives you kind of a perspective of what the student would experience. But we also probably are going to lift the lid a little bit to show you what the teacher's thinking through that process. So, I think it'll be interesting for you tonight. As we go, and we have helpers for the board and for all of anybody that needs help to help you get online and make sure that you're, you know, participating, and you can, you can work with us on it. So, I'd like to start by introducing, first of all, the entire team. We have Terry Alt, we have Carrie Rubey from Top of the World in El Moro. Yes, we, we can clap for her. Thank you, Michael Keller. And, and just stand up briefly, Andy Chris from TMS, and Jen Shen from the high school. And this, this team is a remarkable team, and we've really kind of got, you know, coalesced. And we were working with Chad very carefully on coaching. So, that new model is, is when you see these things, you think of it in the way that they're going back to the classrooms, helping teachers do these, these things. So, I'd like to start out by introducing Carrie and Terry, and thank you.
Good evening. I am Carrie Rubey, and I'm the techtosa at Top of the World, just so you know where I'm at.
And I'm Carrie, and I'm the techtosa at El Moro. And we're really excited to be here tonight to give you a glimpse into the classrooms and how our teachers and students are using technology in meaningful ways.
As Mike mentioned, their teachers are using it in various ways, and one is formative assessment. And so, teachers are utilizing these applications to collect some quick data on their students to provide some immediate feedback and also help guide their instruction. So, in this picture here is a third-grade classroom at Top of the World, where Nadia Hart was utilizing GimKit to assess her students on their progress, on their current math fact mastery. So, that's a everyday occurrence you might see as you walk into a classroom.
Another everyday occurrence that you might see in the classroom are students and teachers using technology from our curriculum assessment and our supplemental programs. This is a picture of some students in first grade at El Moro, and they are practicing their home row skills using typing agent to get ready to use all of our other programs, too.
And of course, we all love student creativity. So, teachers are utilizing applications from our Google Suite, such as Google Slides, all the way to TechSmart, where kids are creating some coding projects. And this cutie in the picture is a kindergartner who is very proud of himself for utilizing seesaw tools to demonstrate his knowledge of some current site words using the Frayer model, so very fancy, so.
What's been really exciting? What's been really exciting to see this year is the, the use of edge of protocols in our classrooms. We were very excited to have John Carrippo, who is the co-author of the three books of the Edge of Protocols field guides. And he's the former president of Q, come to El Moro and model lessons in the classrooms for teachers from both Top of the World and El Moro, kindergarten through fifth grade. Um, this was followed by some professional development opportunities and lesson planning for the teachers. So that they could develop lesson plans that would maximize efficiency and increase student learning.
Okay, so, we are gonna start off by using one of the edge of protocols that teachers have been utilizing in classroom called Fast and Curious. Fast and Curious, as you'll soon find out, is one of the favorites of students and teachers. Uh, BlueKit is the application that we are using to demonstrate the Fast and Curious model. So we would really like for you to join us, um, and participate, board, if you wouldn't mind joining us. You can grab your devices and go to bluekit.com/play, or you can even use the QR code, will take you to the link as well. And the audience, please join us, yes. Yeah, you should see a blue screen with a prompt for a game ID, then you're in the right place. In fact, I'll give you. It should look something like this. I'll provide you with a game ID in just a moment, once we make sure everyone has found it. Are we good with the board? Make sure everyone can participate. And just a moment, I'll share with you the game ID, um, which is a six-digit number that you'll place in there, it'll also prompt you to input your name or nickname. You go ahead and show. Okay, for those of you who are ready, we shall see a code popping up in just a second. So, in just a moment, we'll put in our, um, our game ID for BlueKit. And BlueKit, like we said, is a Fast and Curious Edge of Protocol application. So it's a great way for teachers to introduce some new material and then be able to, um, see how, what the students know. Give a little mini lesson and then see how they can improve the next time around. So we thought it would be a great way to introduce Edge of Protocols itself to all of you. Let's see if I can. Start again. Okay, I think, I think we might be lucky now, let's see. Thank you for your patience. Okay, so we were, there are several game modes, which is really exciting for the students. The one we'll be using today is called Gold Quest, so it's exactly what you might think. Your quest is to collect as much gold as you can as you answer questions for us. So, we are gonna give you three minutes, um, in that three-minute timeline. So as you answer questions correctly, you'll be greeted with a green screen that'll tell you that you got it correct. And then you can, um, move on to select one of three chests. You may gain gold, you may lose gold, you may steal gold, you may swap gold with your opponents, so choose wisely. So let's go ahead and see if we can get everybody logged in, and we'll give it a try. Here's your, now we have the wonderful game ID up there, that six-digit number. Five, eight, eight, nine, one, four. You're gonna know one of the answers right away. And as we're logging in, just so you know, there, this is new material to all of us, or we're assuming relatively new material. So there may be some missed answers. The nice thing about BlueKit is it, it has the students pause for a moment, which hopefully directs them to see some immediate feedback by reading the correct answer and learning from their mistakes and improving from there. Okay, I think we might be about ready. Are we all set for it, is it, okay, all right, let's give it a shot.
As you answer the questions, if you get an incorrect answer, the correct response will show below for immediate feedback.
Oh, Andy stole some gold from, is it Dr. Valoria over there? About fifteen seconds left. Okay, let's see how we did. That was the goal, huh? Well, hopefully you all enjoyed that first experience, as you could see, the kids would get really lively when participating in, in, in activity like this. So the great thing about BlueKit is it does provide a report for the teachers in the class, so they could see some immediate data. And how we did, let's see, our class average was sixty-one percent, not bad first try with new material, right? So, um, the other great thing is we can scroll down and see a lot of detailed information. But most importantly, we can look at our questions and see what might we need to focus our attention on as teachers to move our class forward. So, I see we might need to go over some, um, of our eight parts with our grammar, Carrie. Also, our math rep, and thin slides, and of course, it can't hurt to talk about our four Cs as well. So, in our Fast and Curious Edge of Protocol, it is our, um, next step to give you a mini lesson or reteach before we do the next round. We'll do that just, I think since I just, yeah, you wanna start with this one? Yeah, okay.
All right, so one of the edge of protocols that we use is called Math Reps. And Math Reps maximizes learning by combining ten to twelve standards at one time. And students will receive immediate feedback using either Paradeck or Jamboard while they're doing the math reps. Um, and the teacher can see all the student work at one time, that's the power of those, um, two applications. This is repeated daily and these repetitions allow students to continue to practice the skills and gain more confidence. And for primary students, this can be done in seesaw or even on paper. And this is an example of a third grade math rep, what a third grade math rep would look like.
And now the counterpart to that would be our eight parts Edge of Protocol, which is our ELA version. Eight parts is exactly what you might think, it's the eight parts of speech is the main focus. So students are inspired with a funny picture or something to get their attention, where they can brainstorm words to fill in those eight parts of speech. That they'll use in their writing immediately after, in paragraph form. And once again, with multiple repetition, teachers are able to introduce the students to all the parts of speech from the beginning, instead of waiting. You know, one part of speech at a time throughout the course of a school year. So there's a definite impact there, we have a couple examples to show you. This is from a fourth grade classroom, so you can see how this funny picture in the corner might inspire them to think of some words to fill in this lesson frame, that then they write from. And then for our little guys, we call it little parts. So we have fewer parts of speech that they're focusing on, but accomplishing the same task in a sentence.
All right, another lesson frame that we use is called the Cyber Sandwich. And using this lesson frame, students work from two of the highest levels of Marzano's research, the nine essential instructional strategies. And they compare and contrast topics, and then they also summarize. Um, they compare these topics from one source together, and then it's similar to a Venn diagram. They'll, um, collaborate and talk about what they've read and then summarize. This brings higher level thinking to student learning as they communicate, collaborate, think critically and create.
And, um, Thin Slides is a great edge of protocol for all grade levels, K through fifth grade and beyond. And it allows students to create a quick visual representation of a new topic that they're learning, that they're sharing with their classmates on one Google slide deck. So it involves some quick communication, collaboration, creativity, um, and some critical thinking to make their claim with their visual representation to the class. Uh, here's one example that a third grade class did to show their initial understanding of forces and magnetism during their science class.
And then finally, our last edge of protocol that we're sharing tonight is called the Iron Chef Lesson. Um, and the Iron Chef is similar to a jigsaw, where students, the text is divided into sections and each student would read a section. And then they would create a slide that would include facts and images about the section, and then one secret ingredient that might be another, um, image or, um, another fact, something really fun that they learned. And then after collaborating, each group presents for a max of two minutes to the class. And the Iron Chef Protocol is another great example of the four Cs in action again. And the power of these protocols are that they are the same task repeated over and over again with new content. And so the students don't have to learn how to do the, to do the assignments, they just have to learn about the content using the same lesson frames.
Okay, so hopefully, we have a little bit better understanding of our edge of protocols, and we would like to invite you back for one more round of BlueKit and see if we can't improve, prove our class average.
Typically, a class would improve about twenty percent, um, between the first, um, try and then the mini lesson and the second try.
But no pressure.
No pressure.
Oh, I'll give you, you, uh, if you were already on the play screen, you can click play again for your game ID, and I'll show you a new game ID. I was just waiting a moment to make sure everyone can get in. I think we're good. We will use the same game mode so that we have something familiar to work with. And we're gonna change it to two minutes, see how much you, gold you can acquire. Okay, there's your new game ID, nine, two, seven, five, six, two.
The kids have a lot of fun with this when they get to choose their own avatars too, it makes, it kind of personalizes it for them.
Okay, I think we'll give it another go. Good luck. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I can't. Five seconds. Hey, let's see how we did. Looks like we may have some new winners. So let's check really quick and see how we did as a class. Woo, look at that. All right.
Twenty percent.
Very nice, thank you for participating. Yeah, yeah.
So congratulations on playing, um, playing the game and gaining a twenty percent increase in, in knowledge on edge of protocols.
We are excited to continue working, um, to support our teachers to integrate technology into their instructional practices. To help free student creativity, critical thinking, communication and collaboration, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So up next, we have John and Andy. All right, while we're waiting for this to fire up. Hi, everybody. How you guys doing? I'm Andy Crisp. I am a teacher here. I teach right behind that wall. And I'm also the tech toaster here at Thurston.
Hey, I'm John Shen. I teach at the high school and I'm the tech toaster at the high school.
So if you guys could go to this website that you see on your screen so that you can join our presentation. The website is joinpd, joinpd.com. And then there's a, instead of a number code, that's a letter code. Hilarious incentives honestly vacate orange grapes. H I H V O G. As you guys are logging in, our goal is to do a little bit of the same thing that Carrie and Terry just showed you. Except maybe perhaps more of a secondary approach. But we're excited to show you some of the tech tools that teachers are using, not only to create engaging lessons for their students, but also to assess how engaged students are and assess their own effectiveness as teachers. And we're going to show you sort of both sides of the coin at times. So there'll be times where we flip over to the student side, for example. But when you guys are logging in and you do have to log in with your LBUSD credentials, by the way, to join this presentation. And you'll notice, shout out to Michael Keller, there's a little social emotional check in question when you first log in here. How are you guys feeling today? You can answer that or skip it. But if you, if you log in late, the code will be in the upper right hand corner, the entire presentation. How are we doing? Ready to go? So imagine if when you were, if when you're communicating, let me start over. Imagine if when you are communicating with somebody in your daily life. If you could get real time, objective feedback to gauge their comprehension, their interest level and all kinds of useful data. Help you determine how effectively you're communicating. Wouldn't that be cool?
And that leads us to this question. And we would like to hear from you or see from you. How easy do you think it is for teachers to objectively assess or measure their own effectiveness during or after a lesson? So on your screen, you'll see a purple slider and go ahead and drag that where you think is appropriate.
Almost impossible, always doable, somewhere in the middle. So this is what you guys are seeing, the board members are seeing. Those of you who are not logged in, they're just dragging a slider, letting us know as teachers what their thoughts are. All right.
Okay, and this is the aggregate answer. So this seems like the general feedback is that it is more on the difficult side.
No, the doable side.
The doable side. Sorry. Doable, difficult.
All right, so our view is that in order for teachers to be effective, teachers need to have two major things. We need to have objective feedback on the effectiveness of our pedagogy of our teaching. And we need to have objective data on how engaged our students are. And the common thread there is we need objective information. So let's start with this first one, objective feedback on the effectiveness of our teaching. And it turns out there's lots of tools that we have to help us with this. One new tool that we have this year is called Teach FX. And Teach FX is an app that teachers can use to record audio of their lesson. And then artificial intelligence analyzes that audio and provides all sorts of interesting analytics about what's happening in our classroom during the lesson.
Hey, and as Andy is saying, it, artificial intelligence is sophisticated enough, once programmed in to recognize the voice of the teacher and to recognize when other voices are overlapping or was other than teacher are speaking. And for them, this is based on their website, website. Three insights that guide their approach and their goals are so, are as follows. One student voice, sorry, one student voice and, and the students need to speak in order to learn and participate. And two equity, especially for students who are either unable or less able to, or less willing to speak in class. We need to be sure that everyone get the same opportunity. And finally, feedback in order to improve on the teacher's end to improve their instructions. So in front of you, you see a drawing tool. And we would like to have you use the highlighter or marker and circle which one of these three goals from Teach FX most resonates with you.
Those of you who are not logged in, this is what they're seeing. This is what the board members are seeing or what the students would be seeing.
And what we're seeing is here is on the teacher's end. And we can display that as well to the rest of the class to get instant feedback.
And one of the cool things too is this is all anonymous. So for the kid who's shy, who doesn't like to participate in class, they can feel like they can be an active participant in what's going on. And even if we show your responses or the student responses to the class, it's anonymous data. That's good for them. Okay. Now, at the end of a lesson using Teach FX, you get this report. So the AI analyzes everything, it gives you this report and it's a little bit small. But what you'll see here is a color coded matrix of what is happening in the classroom. So in red, it shows in this example, 38% of the time, the teacher was talking. 50% of the time, the students were talking. 10% of the time, there was silence. Now, is silence a bad thing in the classroom? Well, no, I mean, A, as a teacher who teaches middle school, I can tell you it's definitely not a bad thing. But B, there's a lot of research around giving kids pause or wait time, pausing after you answer a question and letting them have time to process. So what you're seeing here is a picture, an overall picture of an objective picture of the effectiveness of teaching.
Right, so Teach FX is having, almost like having an instructional coach, a completely unbiased instructional coach with you in the classroom to offer you digital and almost, almost mechanical unbiased feedback. And one of the other features is that it generates a word cloud based on everyone's recordings. And on the left here is the recording of the academic language that the teacher used. On the right is the academic language that students use. Now you'll see that you have in your screen, place the type and to, so we can get your feedback. So one thing we want, would like you to reflect on, on the bottom where it's green in the reflect. So in what ways, in what ways do these snapshots look similar or different? And what does that inform you about the student experience in the classroom? So do maybe a quick compare, contrast and, and go ahead and type in a quick answer. And this is another yet anonymous way for the teacher to gather student, student input and feedback.
This is what the board members are seeing. They have a chance to type in the response. And then as the teacher, I can watch the responses as they're coming in.
Again, they're anonymous and this is a great springboard to, for class wide discussion.
I see smiley face. That's a common response from a middle school student. Yeah, interaction is present. But we're going to move on for sake of time. But this is obviously, like John said, an opportunity for us to have a live dialogue with our students as answers are coming in. Okay, so again, our view is that to be effective as teachers, we need to have objective feedback on the effectiveness of our teaching. So I think Teach FX is a great tool for that. We also need to have objective data on how engaged our students are. And so the first one, there's a lot of tools that teachers use to achieve that. The first one we're going to talk about is Gimkit. Now Gimkit is very similar to Bluket. We're not going to play it because it takes time to set up and get going. But it's a classroom game show platform. It's fast, it's engaging, you can play with groups, you can play individually. And the cool part, like with Bluket, is you get objective data at the end on how engaged your students are.
So rather than actually playing a live game with Gimkit, we'd like to just show you a really quick video. And you can play this on your own, but please first, can you please mute your devices? Otherwise, there will be a cacophony of, of video playback. And we will actually play this on the screen as well, just so with the sound. So those who are not logged in can, can see the video as well. Now halfway through this video, it would ask, it will ask you to answer a quick question, just as a pause to reflect and assess. Okay, so.
It's not, you're not missing anything. It's a cheesy song.
Right, there is, all the information is all visuals. So go ahead and click play and it'll play right there on your device on, on your own.
Teachers create question sets called kits. Choose the game type. Set a time limit, kind of like you saw with Bluket. Students join with the game code. Then on the right hand side, you're, you're seeing the student view. And on the left hand side, you're seeing the teacher view. Then on your screens, you'll, the video will pause and you'll have to answer a question.
Yeah, so has everyone seen the question pop up? Right, so at about the minute mark in the video, if you play it, the multiple choice question will pop up. And, and that's one way to gather response. So let's see, the video is not all that long and we're, we're actually gonna go, feel free to pause or end the video. And we're going to actually march forward in the interest of time. So the great thing about Gimkit, just like you saw with Bluket, is that it, it gives us objective data about class participation and, and assessment of student content mastery at the end on both the individual, also group and in the game level. We would love to have played that with you, but in the interest of time, we chose to show you the video instead. Now you notice that we did require you to answer multiple choice question in the middle of a video. And that was us kind of using like inception one app into another. So what you just experienced was actually watching a video through another app called EdPuzzle.
So EdPuzzle is an app that teachers use. It allows teachers to find or create a video, embed questions within a video and then assign that video for students to watch, but not just watch passively, to engage with as they're watching the video. And so one of the cool things again about EdPuzzle, like some of these other tools that we've been sharing, is you get the subjective feedback, subjective data on how the students are doing. So you can see how much of the video the students watched. You can see how many of the questions embedded within the video they got right. And then you can even see like how many times they rewatched a section of the video. So I gave the Thurston teachers a survey recently. We were trying to decide between purchasing EdPuzzle again or going with one of their competitors. And I asked the Thurston teachers, how many of you actually use video in your classrooms on a regular basis as a form of instruction? So what we'd like you to do is take your guess. What percentage of students, sorry, of teachers, would you guess at Thurston Middle School use video as a method of instruction in their classrooms on a regular basis?
If you're still in the EdPuzzle tab, you can simply go back to the Paradeck tab, which is still probably in your browser up on top. And that will bring you back into this, into this Paradeck presentation. There you go. And you can type in a number and we can display that up on the board.
So I think somebody is skewing the results a little here. What percentage, zero to 100? What percentage? We've got some skewed results. But it looks like the, the average is 77. And that's actually pretty darn close. It was about 80%. So about 80% of Thurston teachers are using video on a regular basis to engage their students. So obviously, obviously, video is an important part of learning, especially after distance learning. And having that objective formative data is really important for teachers to have with something like video. So they're not passively taking it in, they're engaged, they're, they're involved.
So to tie this all together, you might have noticed that we were not just presenting a slideshow on, on the screen. We had you participate in an almost captive way on your devices along with the slideshow, asking for feedback and input along the way with many different types of questions. And that's the, the app that we're using to have, for this entire presentation is an app called Paradeck. Paradeck is actually really easy for teachers to use because it's just a simple add-on to Google Slides. So it takes very little work for teachers to use their existing lessons and modify them to solicit this type of student input. On top of that, a teacher during the lesson can in ad hoc, in, impromptu manner, add new assessment to gauge student feedback or student participation or even student mood. So in this case, we would like you to choose one right now that we can demonstrate for you. So you'll see a multiple choice prompt come up. And these are your four choices among Paradeck's many, among Paradeck's many, many different offerings of instant feedback that teachers can gather on the fly.
So if you were us, you were trying to gather feedback on the fly right now, which of these four quick prompts would you choose? So this is what they're seeing. And then let's go ahead and show those responses.
Okay, it is.
All right, so we are going to jump right in and we're going to add, it was the dragable one. Okay, so we have now on the fly added this to our presentation. So drag your dot to show us how you're feeling. Are you understanding? Are you confused? Do you need help? You guys are doing what my middle school students do.
We're able to lock your answers too.
I mean, I might need to lock the screens. That's one of our, that's one of our options. Okay, one of the cool features that Paradeck offers is this thing called takeaways. And takeaways with one click, after I end this, after we end this session with one click, I can generate a customized Google Doc for all of my students that will go automatically into their Google Drive. And it provides, it shows them how they engage with, with the lesson, with the Paradeck. So it shows them how they answered all the questions. And then I, as a teacher, can go in and I can write notes on their Google Doc or I can assign them maybe a reflection piece where they can write in the bottom of the empty space in the Google Doc and reflect on why they answered a certain way on a question. So it's an opportunity for them to reflect on the lesson. It's really a chance for us to extend the lesson beyond just the classroom.
Okay, so we brought back full circle and we'd like to ask you the same question as before. And this time I'll get my left and right unconfused, I promise. So we will let you think after hearing our presentation, again, how, how easy for teachers to measure their, their, measure their own effectiveness in instruction. Hopefully we moved the needle a little bit.
All right, we moved the needle. Okay, so you know, hopefully we weave together a lot of the tools that we as secondary teachers, well, actually all teachers are using to measure the effectiveness of our teaching objectively and to gather objective data on how engaged our students are. And then, you know, we wanted to show you both sides, so hopefully you enjoy that as well. One more thing.
There's one more thing. So as we end the lessons, teachers, we can actually name that session and keep it and record it in our near, in our Paradeck archive. So we can look back and reflect anytime we like.
And here's that generate takeaways option where you would all immediately get a Google Doc with the info.
And, and instead of a one by one view of students, we also have And, and instead of a one-by-one view of students, we also have the opportunity to download a spreadsheet that goes straight into our Google Sheets where we can use all the, uh, statistical analytical functions like, uh, finding averages, growth, et cetera, and all, and all the feedback that we gathered. And this is a powerful tool for us teachers, especially for us data nerds that love to see trends and, and analysis.
Mr. Zeta, I see you didn't answer any of the questions.
That's all we got. Thank you guys so much.
Are there any questions? That was amazing. Thank you.
Just one last thing and we'll, we'll end here in a sec. And then do you have the PDF?
Do substitute teachers use this program when they come and do substitutions? Do, do we evaluate and substitute teachers?
Unless teachers started, uh, be very careful instructions, and, uh, I have attempted that myself actually, where, and are also kind of edge protocols. When, once the, we reach a critical mass of students knowing what to expect, uh, the students can almost sometimes guide the substitute teachers into starting these classes.
I had a question, actually. Um, how do you guys coach, uh, teachers that are, uh, late adopters that might be struggling with these types of tools? And are maybe the ones that need it the most because they are struggling to engage their students?
We, we feed them, we give them food. I'm not kidding. So, one of the things that Mike and Chad have been working with all of us on this year is developing that coaching model. Um, and the first day we got together, we're brainstorming, John and the high school team had come up with this idea to have a, what we're calling a meet and geek lunch, uh, or I think you guys are doing as a dinner, right?
No, I think lunch too.
Was it lunch? Um, an opportunity for the tech folks and the instructional toasts is to come together, um, and buy the teacher's lunch to incentivize them to come, um, and then learn about these things. Just a brief demo of the tools and then hopefully it, it ignites something in them that they want to learn more and then we can follow up with them after. But, um, that's one thing we're doing.
Another thing we're focused on this year in our coaching model is to try to build, uh, really good relationships between us and our colleagues. And we find that whenever we have common bonds or we become friends, it's much easier for us to, to, uh, to, to impart some of these practices rather than somehow, um, relying purely on incentives or coercion or anything like that.
Oh yeah, that, that matters too.
Andy, how many people did you have at your last meet and geek?
Uh, the last one, I think we had 13, 14 teachers, but this coming Tuesday, we have 21 coming, so that's more than half of the Thurston teachers. This is our, this will be our third one. So we've developed a critical mass. Uh, the food is working, but also the relationship, they're working, so, yeah.
And then I was just gonna show you briefly, like, let's say a student goes home and they're stuck. Uh, one of the tools that I know that you know we have is, we have 24/7 tutoring for our students through a program called Paper. It used to be Grade Slam. But, um, if you look at the screen, I'm just gonna show you, they, they take, they anonymize the names for me so that you're not gonna see any names. But if I click on the history, uh, link here. I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna show you a paper instead here. The, so basically the, the interactions that I had there, and I can't show you right now because I'm not logged in, it's me. But, um, they would show a student who is in a history class, one of our students, who is studying, um, trying to come up with a thesis statement for a paper he was gonna write. And he was studying like eugenics in, uh, in Germany. And he was saying, hey, this, this has kind of flowed over to other countries at this time in, in this, in history. And he was struggling with that, that paper, and the, the tutor kind of walked him through like, well, what, what other countries did it flow over to? And asked him questions, leading questions, and eventually the student had a very good thesis statement. So that was kind of cool to see, and I can share that with you in the board update. And then the other student was studying physics, and I will tell you, very few of you in the room could understand the conversation from the tutor to the, to the, uh, student, because they were talking about momentum and different laws of physics, it was, it was amazing. And that was in part of his class, part of Perkins' class. And then this is a third grade student that submitted his paper, uh, uh, explanatory paper about the iPhone. And the teacher actually had them do this in class, so the student submitted the work to Paper. They got feedback in Paper, and then the teacher sat down with the student and went over the feedback and said, oh, you know, the feedback is listed in here with, with these little highlights, so it'll, it'll talk about, um, you know, the, the word choice, the words they're using, the run-ons, if there's a run-on sentence possibly happening. And gives a lot of positive feedback to the student, saying like, hey, look, um, I want to buy an iPhone too after, after reading this. So it was, it's powerful, and I think, um, the essay submission tool, we've used a little bit, but it's something we could definitely use more in our district, so I wanted to show you that kind of. If we're looking at a day in the life of the kid, a kid might experience these inter- engaging activities, but when they come home, they have tools that are also helpful for them when they're doing their homework. Thank you. And that's it. Any questions and?
Mike, that was amazing. Are there any questions?
Mike, just to go over that example you gave on Paper, so the kids can use it at home as a tutoring or essay review tool. But then, could they be using it in class too?
They can be using it. It's 24/7, so if they're stuck in class, some teachers are having them use it in class as, as a tool.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Great. Do you know on the essay review, is it like a couple hours or a couple days?
Uh, the, this one came in within hours, but it was a very simple paper. So I think the more complex and the more high level that it is, it takes up to a day to come back.
Great, what a great tool. Thank you.
Yep, welcome.
Thank you so much. That was really informative.
Thank you.
Really helpful.
Alright, thanks, Mike. We appreciate it. So that takes us to 7A, which is report on developer fees. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make a public comment on the report on developer fees?
I've scanned the room. I see no speakers.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Clerk Osborne. Mr. Dixon, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Valoria. This is the annual developer fee report. The developer fees, as the board recalls, are also identified as Fund 25 in our budget documentation. Uh, the report is brought to the board annually to identify the amount of the fee that's charged based on the square footage of new residential or commercial construction, how much was collected, uh, or spent for the year, and then what the remaining fees or future fees are planned to be spent on. Um, and then again, we bring this to the board annually and updates are provided with all the other budget information via the budget, adopted budget, the interim reports and monthly financials will also show us Fund 25. How about you take any questions?
Thank you, board members or students. Any questions for Mr. Dixon?
Mr. Dixon, mine is just a preliminary question. I know this is an information item, but, um, this is the first time I've seen developer fees. So my understanding is they can be used for facilities, um, and facilities only, not for ongoing staffing or other costs, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and could there, is, is it something that's only reviewed every five years or is it every year?
Every year. This, this report, the annual developer report, is brought every year. And then in addition, we also bring information related to developer fees in our facilities master plan. As you see, some of the projects have that identified as a funding source. We don't collect enough developer fees to actually pay for these projects in totality, but you can see some portions of the project are paid for out of Fund 25, which is where you'll see the movement on monthly financials of, you know, incoming revenue versus expenditure.
Okay, because right now we're spending more than we're collecting in fees, but our fees are much lower than the state allows us to have them.
About half, about half of what the current level one minimum is.
And then when we want to look at what our possible develop, not develop, developer fees could be, if we were charging a higher rate, that's where we contract a, um, group to do a study on that?
Correct. You would do a, a developer fee study. Uh, it's a justification study that would look at all the potential new development. And it's similar to what we've gone through back in 2016, the board received and reviewed a developer fee study. Um, it would be the same information that was provided at that time as well.
Okay, and so as we think about as a board, um, projects like, um, the two things that we have feasibility studies on right now, district office and potential expansion of facilities for potential transition, well, kindergarten. Would we want to consider, um, doing another study on developer fees?
I'm, I'm actually glad you brought that, that question specifically up. It, it's very important to note developer fees need to be spent on classroom construction just for, uh, for our students. So district office wouldn't be something that you could spend developer fees on.
Okay, um, athletic facilities?
Classroom. It must be classroom specific, yes.
Preschool classrooms?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, uh, preschool classrooms would qualify as, as do kindergarten classrooms. So it's a similar under Title V and Title 24 requirements, but, uh, yeah.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much for that information.
Could you, um, give us a report on what surrounding districts are charging for development fees? Not at this time, but as far as.
I'd be happy to pull that information. Um, I do know the current level one fee is just over $4 per square foot. Um, and the last time we updated our developer fee was back in 2001, which our, our, our fee is $2.05 a square foot residential construction. And that was, um, something that was approved back in 2001, that the state had approved as a minimum level back in 2000. So, um, I'm happy to look into that.
Any other questions? I'm filling in for Member Norman and she'll have to step out. Any other questions? No, alright. Moving to item. Make sure I have my number right. 8A, Educator Effectiveness Block Grant. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make a public comment on the first quarter report for the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant Plan?
None received.
Alright, thank you, Clerk Osborne. Dr. Mayberry, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, so this is a, a, a grant that came to us this fall, um, from the state of California. And so, uh, part of the, part of that grant is, turns as an information item, and then the next following meeting would actually have a plan that would be formally approved. So, uh, at this board meeting, we're just gonna kind of share a general overview of, of the draft plan as it is, uh, right now. Um, so if you go to the next slide, um, it kind of talks about, or sorry, one more slide. Um, it talks a little bit about the, the grant that came into place very recently, actually, so it was a pleasant surprise. The state is, has included one-time funds of $1.5 billion to be spent over the next four and a half years. Um, our allocation on that, uh, is about a little bit over $750,000. Um, and then, uh, there was a series, if you go to the next slide, uh, there's a series of different, uh, areas or allowable uses that, uh, it can be spent. And so there's, you know, this is very small font, I'm not gonna go get into detail of it, but these are ones that the state's been working on and, and been talking about. And, and you'll, I'll show you these a little, some of these in a little bit more detail, um, in the upcoming slides. But it's things around literacy, around, uh, English language learners, coaching, uh, strategies for MTSS, strategies for professional learning communities, so a whole host of, of different things that the state has been looking at. So then we pull from there, uh, how we might use it, so. Uh, then we go to the next slide. Because this kind of came upon us a little bit unexpected, um, but a pleasant surprise. We, we're probably gonna take the, at least the next several months to continue, continue to gather input, add more details to the plan. We, the initial plan is we built out of what we've already working on with our LCAP, but the, um, a lot of the next couple of months will be around just meeting with teachers, meeting with, looking at a little bit closer look at our data, look at some of the work we're already doing. Obviously, the challenge this year is we don't have a lot of substitute teachers available. So there's not a lot of funds we could spend this year, even if we wanted to, uh, in that lens. So a lot of the work that would happen this year would probably happen in the summer. Um, but we wanted to still reach out and make sure that we are getting, making the right professional development, uh, determinations based on our needs. So, um, if you go to the next slide, uh, this is that overview of our three goals again. So you'll see the areas that the plan's been developed in, uh, is around our three goals. And so continue that work around college and career readiness, uh, building out, uh, social emotional competencies and positive self-identity. And then again, around safe, equitable, inclusive, uh, learning environments. So the first goal on the next slide is, um, breaks it down into a lot of the work we're doing around professional learning communities and our essential learning outcomes and our common form of assessments. So you'll see there, um, there's some parts around, and we, the previous presentation a little bit earlier tonight talked about instructional coaches. So some of those funds would be continued to support the instructional coaching, which we know is one of the most impactful ways to, uh, improve, uh, teaching and learning. So continuing that, some professional learning in the area of literacy and the area of problem-solving approach with mathematics. And then, and again, around some of the work we're doing around early literacy, uh, with our OG strategies and our structured literacy approach, uh, especially at the primary, uh, age groups. And then this under goal one, there's also, uh, we know our early learning program, uh, as we're looking at preschool, TK, Kinder. Uh, how do we support that going forward, uh, depending on how that plays out, uh, with the, the state's initiative for, uh, which we'll talk about later tonight, around universal TK. Um, and then again, some cross-curricular integrated research strategies that goes across all, uh, content areas. So some, some professional development, um, based around a lot of the components of our AER, uh, class that we have at the high school. Uh, that's, that's really been built out, and so how do we, um, you know, use some of those components maybe in other classes? Uh, and then, and then expanding some, potentially some online or blended classes, um, in the future. So that's kind of the lens through the college and career, um, skills. And then the next slide, uh, takes a look at some expenditures in the plan, uh, that's attached to the board item around social emotional competence and, and positive self-identity, so some personal, personalized learning, which you saw some of that earlier. Differentiation strategy, student voice and choice, uh, flexible learning environments. So, uh, future training, that, some of that work, uh, we're already doing for the challenge success, uh, about building student voice and choice. Building out collaborative development, like portrait of a graduate, like what we want our students to look like and, and skills to have, uh, when they leave us. Right, we've done some of that work informally with our LCAP advisory group. Uh, so, uh, possibly expanding that beyond that group that we, we've done that. Uh, looking at proactive approach to, uh, positive behaviors approach, so PBIS, uh, different behavior supports, um, which is built into it, which is our, we discussed our LCAP. But then again, a lot of the school climate programs, right, that we're doing, our SCL curriculum, the growth mindset, character programs, continuing to support those. But having additional training that maybe we wouldn't have had otherwise, uh, or potentially having some staff time to support that, that we maybe wouldn't have otherwise. And then under the last, uh, goal, under goal three, you'll see on the next slide, um, supporting our MTSS. And so, um, continuing develop of our assessment system with data, with data analysis intervention support. So, um, making sure we have staff that support that, to have the training to do that, to do that data analysis, uh, not just centrally, but also at the school sites. Some professional growth support that we're providing with our, uh, peer educators and structural aids. You know, it's a group that we continue to train and, and we have some that actually go on to be teachers here, so how do we continue to support their growth? Uh, the area, they're often the ones that are providing our intervention in the, inside the classrooms. Continuing our workaround, uh, that we've been doing with the, uh, ELD roadmap. And so, um, we're doing some PLC work with that at the, at, over at the elementaries and building out strategies that not only are interventions, but also for, in the regular classroom that are pushed in. Uh, and then, uh, I was just mentioning some previous board reports, um, continuing spending things around learning walks and having opportunities maybe to go visit other schools or other model schools, or schools that have certain innovations going on. So that we can take a team there and learn from others and continue back to that growth and innovative practices that we have here. So that's kind of the, obviously this is a little bit more of a 30,000-foot look at it. But we felt like the best way to build this out in a shorter time period is to start with our LCAP, right? What do we, what did we decide to focus on last spring? How do we want to continue that, uh, over multiple years? And then, uh, take the rest of this year, or at least the next, this winter, to kind of really dig into some of the details around, uh, is this the right fit? Are there other options out there that we want to consider, uh, under our three goals that we, that we put forward? So, um, with that, uh, that's kind of the general summary of, of, uh, grants. Um, and again, this is something we have four and a half years to spend, um, so it, uh, it can be broken up in any way. You know, some of that will be determined based on, uh, things like, you know, the challenge we have this year around subs, available subs for, you know, if we're. You know, some of that will be determined based on things like, you know, the challenge we have this year around subs, available subs for, you know, if we're going to training. Right now, it's very difficult to do, might be available staff to consultants to come in. So the, you know, whether that's all spent, you know, the first two and a half years or three and a half years or four and a half years, well, some of that will be factors that we don't know quite yet. But that's the general overview of the plan at this time. Open it up to you for questions.
So is some of this money paying for instructional coaches and TOSSAs?
Yes, yeah, going forward, they would do that, yep.
Okay, and I I know you're doing some surveys is. Is one of the surveys on like to the teachers on how effective the coaching and their mentoring is? Or if they have suggestions on how it might be better?
Yeah, I mean, we do, do we do professional development surveys already, which is kind of how a lot of our L cap is built.
Well, I'm not talking about professional development survey, I'm talking about just an evaluation of how the TOSSAs are. Are doing as far as helping students and the teachers and the instructional coaches.
So you're asking if we have the teachers evaluate the structural coaches?
Well, not not really evaluate them, but just talk about what things they might might be more helpful for them.
Yeah, yeah, no, those are things that we'll, we continue to collect and figure out the best way to use that, especially since it's a newer, especially since it's a newer program.
Right, 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 what things are and what things aren't, so we can kind of guide it, because it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
Doctor Mayberry, I only had one comment, which was I appreciated that you've pushed some of the spending of the funding out into the future year, so for twenty two, twenty three and twenty three, twenty four. Because I did notice one of the allowable expenses is for. Instruction for certificated and classified in early childhood, so it sounds like we have a really great program with the TOSSAs. The math that we've added more of the computer literacy and tech. And it seems like we might have a need for some of that educator effectiveness if we get into early childhood, so. Are they, are they predetermined when we, when we approve the report? Like the expenditures by year?
No, we we have to annually report it to the state. However, it'll just, it can adjust year to year. You know, those are some things that we just, we won't be able to determine, you know, like if, depending on if we do TK, you know, expand TK next year. Or three years down the road, we'll cut, we can adjust it based on the need of, you know, what staffing is available or. Or if there's no staffing needs, right?
Yeah, that's great. So we submitted, you submit a plan to the state that meets the requirements, but it doesn't have to be specific at this point, especially three years out.
Yeah, correct, yeah, I think it's a lot of districts are dealing with right now, I mean, they're obviously very thankful for it.
Yeah.
But it, but it's a quick turnaround that we have to have this presented at a board meeting and then a subsequent board meeting, have it approved before, all before December thirtieth.
Agreed, okay, thank you for your time and your work on it.
Did you say before December thirtieth, December?
I'm just grateful that they gave us five years. It's really well planned.
Yes, I, I mean, I think we've, a lot of the plans have been quick turnarounds, this is nice to be able to to expand that and have that a little bit more time with it. And especially around some flexibility as things change.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry. Okay, so we're moving on to item eight B, universal transitional kindergarten. Clark Osborne, is there anyone wanting to speak to this?
No.
Thank you. Doctor Mayberry, the floor is yours again.
Thank you again, so for tonight, I just want to share an update on the state's initiative to expand. TK to eventually be universal TK. This is something that came up recently as well. It's been talked about in the state on and off for a long time. It started really getting, picking up momentum in the last year and then the summer and then finally this fall really started moving forward. And putting some connecting dollars and funding to it, so. We, as we all, as we always want to do, like, catch these two, our goals as a board, right, and so we want to look at. Whether really presenting worth the things to think about tonight, what to consider moving forward with this. One of the things that's unique to community funded districts like ours is that we don't receive, we won't receive per pupil spending by other districts, well, so. So we want to make, get input or direction on, you know, moving forward with planning and what that might, you know, if there's anything you want us to think about as we move forward. That may change down the road, as of right now, we're not getting any additional funding. There are some grants that are available, but really looking through the L cap goals that we have, right, having, expanding TK, there's. You know, there's probably, there's lots of ways that connects to those, I would say, one of the more important ways is on social development. With students being here at a little bit younger age with our programs that we have and that they connect and the alignment coherence with that, but then also around early literacy prevention and intervention. As you look at that, which is part of what we worked on in our goal three, so if you go to the next slide. It talks about the transition to this, so the the state's plan is to add a couple of months every year right now. It goes through December second, so then it would move back two months and then back two months, so. It would slowly move back, so you'd have a universal TK by twenty five, twenty six available. So we're moving back two months each year for four years. Go to the next slide. There's really four factors that that we're kind of looking at right now. The first one's around funding. As I mentioned earlier, right, at this time, we're not getting any additional funding, we are expecting potentially two grants, one, one facility based. That we may, we may get that they're talking about, which is about a hundred thousand and then one around. Just implementation of program and training and staffing initially, and these are one-time grants and that one would be around a hundred thousand as well. As you can imagine, the cost of a teacher. As we would add teachers through this, like that money, that one-time funds are not going to go very far, or if we had to expand our facilities. So there are some concerns, there are definitely some concerns and considerations around funding to think about going forward. If you go to the next slide, another important factor is staffing. Currently, currently, we run an AM PM program that overlaps a little bit, it's not totally separate, they overlap a little bit in the middle of the day. Our average students this year, although this year's a much lower average student of the last five years has been about typically, we have around twenty two or twenty three students in there, so about twelve each. The state has a requirement with this that next year would be a twelve to one ratio. So we have one teacher now for what typically in the past has been around twenty two, twenty three, twenty four students. So we split that in half, so she does have that ratio that would be around a close to twelve to one after next year, then it would go down to ten to one. Now, you can have, you have to have a credential teacher in there, but you could have an instructional aide as well, if you wanted to have put twenty students in there, you could have a teacher and an instructional aide. But then obviously, it's a cost of another staffing for that person. And then you don't want to consider is this AM PM like we have essentially have now, do we want this to be all day, right? And I think that's state's intention that it's an all-day program, somewhere where their intention around having kinder for most, for districts to move to a full day. That's their intention, I don't know if they're necessarily going to require that. So we would have to look at, is that something we'd want to do all day, a half day, do you want to partner with somebody to provide some kind of care for the other half of the day? Or they just go home, because that would impact enrollment, right, parents can choose based on what we potentially would offer. The other, you know, current kindergartens right now is typically around a hundred and forty students, right? So you can see that we have one teacher, we have one teacher right now that typically has about twenty two students. And so if you move that up to a hundred, a hundred, a hundred students, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty, we're adding a lot of teachers potentially there, right? Depending how we set that teacher, the teachers up, depending on how we set up, if it's an instructional aide that's working with them, how we break it up, half day, full day. It's a whole range of potential costs, depending on how you set it up. And then the last, this last part here is around these last two factors, credentialing and training. And not this, not this August, but the following August, they are updating some credential requirements around transitional kindergarten. That way, that we would have to have, make sure teachers have that credential and are trained for the early childhood credit. There's, there's a couple of different options to that, that are flexible, but you know, you think through how, you know, the challenges that we're having right now. You know, the labor markets and teachers, like, so I think a lot of districts right now are very worried about, okay, if I go, you know, from. One class at an elementary to five, where are we going to find four teachers that are trained and credentialed right now? That's why there's a, it's a multi-year transition, essentially a four-year transition to set up, help with that. But definitely a consideration along with any professional development that would go with that. And then hearing just the different, you know, things I just mentioned now around. Facilities, right, we don't have a, we don't have a campus that has five empty rooms, right? So there are, there would be impacts to facilities if this down the road, or at least it would eventually get to that point, depending on available cities, facilities. Costs that would go with that, and then you have, it's not just getting a portable classroom, right? Like, these are very young ones, right, a young kiddos, right, so you need appropriate playground equipment, you need appropriate restrooms, you need appropriate classroom furniture. You know, things that are very often specific to our our little ones. So those are kind of like the four big things to think through, funding, staffing, credentials, facilities. And so I think tonight, I wanted to give, provide an update to the board on that and where that's at, and I think, you know, when I talk to other districts in the county, they're all. Kind of in a similar place, they're looking at what are the potential costs, what do we want to consider? You know, what are the things we have to plan for next year, two years, three years down the road, so I think. I was hoping to get tonight is just some, any answer to your question from questions, but then also. You know, maybe get some direction on how much further you want us to go with this, as of right now, we don't, besides those two one-time grants, we don't know. We don't necessarily have specific funding set aside for it, or not set aside, we won't get additional funding from the state. So with that, I'll. Open up for questions. Or comments.
I, my comment is, I think we should go forward with this, I think the families are going to deserve this and. I think we may have to take some money out of our own pockets, but I think it's a great move.
What do you think about the idea of the two teachers to a classroom? You know, the larger classroom so that we don't have to. You know, fund more buildings. So two teachers for twenty kids.
And I, and I just, I also just wanted to clarify. What I'm asking, we don't have to make, not to make a decision tonight. And so, but to, to, you all, think, think about how much for, you know, do we want to like, okay, do we get more money, do we want to? Is this something that we don't, you know, we're not going to move much forward with our planning stages, or do you want to continue to start planning towards this and report back in a couple of months?
I don't think we're to the point of doing the day-to-day stuff. I think, I think the question is, should we go forward with this and then direct them to continue the planning on this, which I'm real for this.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm for the planning for it, but I didn't know if they were planning then to build more rooms and then get little furniture and all that. I mean, that.
I don't think they're either.
Yeah, we're not that far along, that's, so part of it is for us, again, to turning board interests to continue the process to investigate. We do have a feasibility study, obviously, that we are working on. That will also help us identify what the potential funding cost would be, to your point, member Perry, you know, part of the design of, okay, it would cost us this much money to build all these other spaces. So programmatically speaking, maybe we, you know, we could save that by doing this, but until we have all those things done. You know, we, we don't want to, you know, we're not going to get to that that level of detail, but we thought it was important for the board to have an understanding of where things are at right now. To make sure that we're not spending staff time if ultimately, right now, the board was to say, you know, we don't want to go down that road unless there's dedicated funding from the state. And then we would press the pause button, but if the board is feeling pretty confident that, no, let's just continue that process and then, you know, I thought we, we all felt it was really important for the board. To have an opportunity for, we got too far down to see all the different challenges we're facing, but also to weigh and ask a few questions. But again, in terms of the the day in and day outs, we're not there, we wouldn't know whether we would offer an AM PM full day, you know, blended, any of that, that would all need to be determined later on. We just need to have a general, just from the board, if you're comfortable with us moving forward, which it sounds like most, most everyone is, so. There'll be much more to come, I would expect, including hopefully some lobbying on your part with the state legislature to. Get them to make sure there's dedicated funding streams for districts like ours.
I think even if there isn't a dedicated funding stream, if that doesn't work out, I think it's. We always seem to figure out how to make the money work, we have funding. And I think it's very important for young families to have the support, it's really expensive. And I like the fact that it'd be connected to the schools, and I actually think it should be with the new district offices. Make it all together.
Yeah, I appreciate, Doctor Maybe, I appreciate the update. I do think as a board, we need to be prepared for a potential large fiscal impact. If we're not able to secure funding from the state, like all the other non-community funded districts, we're looking at new facilities. Potentially eight new teachers, which could be up to a million dollars a year ongoing without any funding. So I'm a huge fan of high-quality early education, I just think as a board, we need to be aware that that could be the fiscal impact. And I would say it might be interesting to look at what the need is. Young children don't do well transitioning from program to program if full daycare is desired or needed by our families. So, you know, busing four-year-olds doesn't usually work that well, especially in mass quantities. So there's a reason why the state wants, you know, full day or wraparound services at school sites, and that might not be something that we're interested in doing. So I do think the concept out of the state is really good. I think there could be staff that come into the public TK out of private preschools, because those will likely start to go out of business. Or those staffing will roll off of those private schools and maybe be potential new labor pool. But I think that it's a very, you know, it could possibly have a pretty large impact on our. On our, on our district, so I think we should go an eyes wide open. So that's my first comment. My second comment is, it would be really interesting, yes, to continue the feasibility study. I think it would be interesting to look at some of the really high-quality preschool programs out there. Maybe take a tour, Orange Coast College has a terrific lab school that they've run for decades. It would be interesting to see what high quality looks like for preschools out there. In what it looks like for young four-year-olds, we've only done it with almost five-year-olds. But by the end of this implementation, you would be serving children that have just turned four, and they look very different because they develop very quickly. So that would be a second idea to consider. And then third would be surveying our youngest families, maybe a kindergarten parent survey that would look to assess what the actual interest is from the community. Because I think, I agree with Dr. Kelly that there should be something we should be able to offer to our community, but first, it would be interesting to see whether this is something they. Want and would use, so those are my three points on it. And we need to try and get some funding for it from other sources and wait, and we need to watch what happens federally. Because there's still a lot of changes in the space that could come down the pike with vouchers and other things, so.
The other issue is, I think our numbers are going down in the school district. And so we may be redeploying funds to this program. Because we don't, the numbers of students that we're having are drastically going down, and I think the numbers of juniors and seniors coming up. Is, 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 when I came on the border, there's over three thousand students in the district, and I think now there's twenty seven hundred. So that's not, not very long, so this may, this may be something to save positions and. And besides providing quality services to our families.
Is that adequate direction?
I just wanted to say that some of those are some of the things that we have been talking about. Around going to visit some other schools, surveying some parents, not just necessarily ones that are not here now, but ones that are here and say, would you have done this, right? And so, so I appreciate you providing that direction, so we'll look forward to keep doing some of that work in the upcoming months and coming back with a report to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Mayberry. And this moves us to item ten A, approval of resolution number twenty one dash seventeen to establish an interfund transition of nine hundred thousand dollars. From the, from the general fund to the special reserve fund for the facility repairs and replacement program for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Clark Osborne, do you have anyone wishing to speak on this?
No.
Thank you, then, Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, this is the, a resolution to complete the annual transfer of funds from our general fund. To the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars to the facility repair replacement program, otherwise known as FERP. We, this is an annual contribution that's for the. We, this is an annual contribution that's for the major repair and replacements that we experienced throughout the district. It was, came about initially with the general obligation bond that passed in 2000 with a promise to maintain improvements. That once they were complete, we would maintain them, which we are doing. Mr. Zeta does a terrific job with proactive maintenance, and I think that's the intent. The, the goal of any strong maintenance program is to be proactive and not reactive. And that's really what FERP helps us do. It also used, it used to be known as a lot of different things. I like to use the term deferred maintenance. Is a common term that's been thrown out to talk about these types of things. But it's really existing large-scale infrastructure that needs to be replaced, that has a longer life cycle beyond 10 years, typically around 20 years. So happy to take any questions.
Now, do you want to ask any question? Okay. Then may I have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Any comments? Isabelle, can I have a student provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
President Armendon? Yes. So the motion carries 401. And this takes us to. Sleep too fast. 10B, approval of resolution 21-18 to establish intra-fund transfer of $2.7 million. From the general fund to the special reserve fund for capital improvement plan for 2021, 2022. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards?
No.
Thank you. Then Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. This is another resolution that we've done annually, the transfer of general fund dollars to the capital improvement program and Fund 40. The one difference this year is that the CIP program has historically, we've had a contribution of $1.2 million. From general fund to CIP to support the projects as identified in the facilities master plan. What's new in this transfer this year is the inclusion of the one and a half million dollars that was set aside in potential one-time general fund dollars. To the CIP to continue the feasibility study analysis for both the district office and more importantly, the, the TK or preschool program. That we began planning with the architects to complete our feasibility analysis for what those facility costs might be. So that discussion we had prior, in a prior item, is very relevant to what this item is doing. So the total transfer amount from general fund to CIP would be the $2.7 million as proposed in this resolution. Happy to take any questions.
Appreciate you being proactive. Are there any questions or comments? Could I have a motion?
Moved.
Isabella?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry? President Armendon? Yes. And then the motion carries 401. And I'd like to take a 10-minute recess, 14 minutes, we'll be back at 8:10. Everyone can get user stream, thank you. We're going to re-convene the meeting. It is 8:10. And we are on item 10C, the approval of positive certification of first interim report. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards on this?
No.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, President Norman. And as a reminder to the board, the first interim report is just all the changes to the adopted budget. As we've experienced through the end of, of October of this year. So I'm happy to report there are very, very minor changes to the budget. I will go through them here. So we'll start first with the revenues. We'll talk through what those changes are, do the same thing with expenditures. Then we'll look at the ending fund balance and then look at the multi-year with the, the ending fund balance in mind. So we can see growth or reduction over time. And then we'll take, I'll take any questions and give staff recommendation for positive certification. So that'll begin with the revenue changes, very small changes in terms of our LCFF revenue. Really just based on our actuals of average daily attendance as reported from the start of the school year. And then the largest change being in the federal and state revenue. The other state revenue decreased by about 900,000 while the federal revenue increased. And the reason for that is where the state had initially planned on providing COVID-19 relief funds all through the state general fund budget. They switched some of that to pass through some of the federal dollars into their, their program. So that's why you saw an increase in the federal dollars coming in and a reduction in the state. There's actually been no reduction to the relief dollars that we're receiving. It's just who those dollars are coming from. That's the change. When you look at the other local dollars, the largest, about half of that increase is coming from the cost of living increase of about 4%. For special education for our SOPA. The rest are for grant awards from like school power and things that we don't record until we get receipt of a source document. Or the actual funds come in to record as revenue. On the next slide, we look at expenditures. The largest change is the budgeted expenditures for the compensation increases. Prior to that, in the adopted budget, if you recall, the increases were budgeted in the, the, the components of ending fund balance. It was called out there, same with our potential one-time for the transitional kindergarten program. So now it's been moved into the appropriate object codes for both certificated and classified personnel. So there's no actual increase in expenditures. They were just coded to the proper area. Books and supplies increased primarily due to the COVID-19 relief funds. Receiving the funding or the source documents that say the funding's coming in at a specific time. And those, but those expenditures are then budgeted. So at the time of budget adoption, we didn't budget the expenditures of funds that we didn't have any guarantee we were going to receive between now and then we have. And then we have other outgo for higher than anticipated student placement costs, which is typical for that to fluctuate each year. Those are the special education placements outside of our district, and the costs are very hard to predict, as well as the placements. Sorry, I clicked my mic instead of, I was trying to change a slide, but I muted myself. And then we get into the ending fund balance. And again, this, this is very close to what was seen in the adopted budget, just about $100,000 swing to the positive for us. So you see the non-spendable revolving cash, the restricted, otherwise for us is our routine restricted maintenance reserve. Our assigned potential one-time and the unassigned, which is made up of our reserve for economic uncertainties. As we look at the multi-year projection with the ending fund balance in mind, you'll see it growing in each year. Out beginning next year, so now we, in this, this slide here, you see that we can meet all of our financial obligations. Plus, our fund balance is anticipated to grow based on every, all the assumptions included with the budget as presented. And the first interim change is being presented to you tonight. So with that, we, staff is recommending a positive certification for the first interim report, and I'm happy to take any questions from the board.
Are there any questions? Do you have a motion? Isabella, can I have your student provisional vote?
Oh, yes.
Yes, okay. All in favor? Opposed? No? Okay, so the motion passes 401. This moves us to item 11A, and thank you, Mr. Dixon, for that. Sorry, I didn't mean to. This is approval of resolution number 21-19, assignment of instructional coaches per California title. Section, section 800, 020.4B. Clerk Osborne, is there anyone, any blue cards?
No.
Thank you. Sorry, I still have to ask you. With that, Mr. Paul, I need a floor.
Thank you, President Armendon. So again, this is, this will be a new process, a new annual process for the board with, to CalSAS is the new California. It's a California statewide assignment accountability system being used by the CTC, the California Teacher Connection Commission. So with that, they're requiring the board, the board to verify any teachers that we have in staff development roles. So the resolution you'll see is, is you bypassing the resolution. You are hereby agreeing that the staff members we have in place in the roles of the K5 computer literacy toses, both Terry Alt and Kerry Rebey. Who you saw this evening, our K12 EL instructional coach, Yadi Rojas, our two elementary instructional coaches, Kimberly Matheson and Marion Bynum. And our two math intervention support toses, which would be Rosie Hanes and Madison Krogman. By, again, by you pass, by, by you approving the resolution, you're agreeing that they have the, the subject matter expertise to, to, to be staff developers. In the areas that we have them assigned, again, because they, they all hold multiple subject credentials. But again, now with CalSAS, they're saying the person either has to have, say, a math credential if they're the math intervention tosa. Or the boards pass this resolution to acknowledge that, yes, they do. And I can tell you, but as you saw from our two computer science or K5 computer literacy toses. They most definitely have the expertise to support our teachers in those areas. So we are confident that all of those teachers have the subject area expertise. And ask that you approve this resolution this evening, and again, it'll be an annual occurrence moving forward.
Are there any questions? Mike, did you say this was a new?
Yes. Yeah, previously it was not, it was not required with, with the CalPad annual audit.
Thank you. Okay. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Moved.
One second. Izzy, Isabelle?
Yes.
Oh, it's a resolution. Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
President Armendon? Yes. So the motion carries 401. This brings us to 12A. Action item, approval of the MOU between college and career advanced advantages. And Leganovich Unified School District for Adult Education. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry, you have a floor?
Thank you. So we bring forward this MOU between our district and college and career advantage for adult education. Recommending approval of it. This is a, we, our adult education program, we continue to expand it and diversify the needs of the students. Or of local residents or people who work here. We currently have an ESL program. We're doing a pilot GED program this year. We started a kind of a vocational workforce readiness program with the city a couple of years ago that kind of got paused. During, while everything was closed down, that's back up and running and had, I think we had 40 students in it this fall. So that was really exciting. And then this is something we've been talking about with Patty Romo through, through CCA and recently. As well, they currently have an adult ed program for their CTE classes. So we've been talking about this for a while, and so we wanted to move forward with this MOU to provide a little bit more skill-based classes that have certifications. That they've done in the past or have some experience that we could potentially expand into this area. They currently have, I think this year they have five classes. If we partner with them, with this one, that would be add two more. This MOU would be for a year and a half to, to essentially extended time to try these classes and look through different enrollments. The ones that we were exploring for this year, the school year, are culinary hotel and hospitality. And then I went around cybersecurity. And so with this approval of this, this will allow us to go forward with these classes in this partnership to, you know, with CCA. Who's been a long time wonderful partner with us in these kind of career skilled base classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
And these are for older adults, right?
Yes, these are for not 18, over 18.
Yeah, they might not be that old, but yeah, no, I think that's wonderful. I'm really glad that we can provide this.
Is this the program we partner with the city?
This one will be with CCA. So the one with the, we do a little bit of workforce readiness one with the city right now. That's more about like general skills, like we do Google Suite, some interview skills, resume building. A little bit more technology readiness that would go with, with workforce. This one, there's no certification that would come, that comes with that one, the city. This one, we get to use CCA's expertise in this area around providing this, this type of certifications to adults. And so we would be doing that with them. And then the classes themselves are likely to be out of businesses. So they have some partnership with some hotels that we would, we potentially would work with for those. I think they may end up initially starting at either one of our facilities or maybe even at a local high school. That's just outside the city to kind of get it up and going, but with the goal of getting it into the city as soon as possible.
Who does the recruitment? And the students?
Say that again.
Who does the recruitment of the students?
For this one, CCA will do the recruitment. We have some, we do a little bit of recruitment ourselves with the city and, and, but this for the career one, they already have. They go out to different, a couple of different organizations and promote it throughout the county. Obviously, they cover a lot, much larger area than we would. So they have a couple of areas that they promote, they would promote these specific classes.
In, in talking to Patty Romo, she said that these are areas that are really needed. And that often students get good jobs before they even finish. So that's very encouraging.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a really good opportunity for people in this area, if we can, if we go forward with this, I agree.
And how do people in general learn about it? If it's, if they're not being recruited, like if it's not being published that way, is there a website they go to or?
I mean, we posted our website, CCA posted on theirs, however, they push it out through different, like chambers of commerce, different of organizations. That promote workforce readiness. I'm not remembering them off the top of my head right now. I can certainly share that with you. But Patty Romo had mentioned a few areas where they do promote it and they're able to get, make people more aware of it. Sometimes, sometimes it is something like a newspaper, but I think they have some more different labor-related organizations that help them put the information out for the classes. And these are free too, which I think is super important and valuable in these times.
That's great. Okay. May I have any questions or may I have a motion? Is there any comment or discussion? Where I look over there, Isabelle, and ask for a vote. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries 401, and it moves us to 12B, and thank you so much, Dr. Mayberry, for that. This is the approval of the contract with the Diverse Network Association. WETIP 2.0 for cloud-based tip reporting and management systems from November 19th, 2021 through June 30th, 2023. Clerk Osborne, do you have any blue cards?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. So we current, we currently use what we call Text-a-Tip. It's a Google Voice number for different concerns that students might have. Around, it could be anything from concerns around mental health, concerns around their friends, could be vandalism, a whole host of ways that they can do that. This, this approval of this program, WETIP, which is now being used across, across the country. They have some very large partnerships, not just with school districts, but with cities, with businesses. It's a 24/7 service, and, and they are able to not only get potential support through references. But they also have contacts of local emergency numbers. So when it's outside of typical hours, like they have someone available to respond and provide them resources right away. And we actually expect our, our insurance A-Skip is, is, will fund the first year for us. And possibly the second year. So we want to, what we want to do is approve this and move forward this for the rest of this school year while keeping Text-a-Tip, as some people know that. And then kind of get this one up and ready in January and train staff and push it out. And so that we can, can transition it out at, really at the start of next school year.
That's great. Are there any questions?
It seems like a good use of funds. I really like that it's 24/7.
May I have a motion? A second, okay.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Good. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries 410 or 401. And that moves us, and thank you so much. That moves us to 13A. This is, actually, I'm the superintendent, appointment of two LBSD board representatives and one alternative representative to serve on the college and career advantage board. Clerk Osborne, are there any, anyone turn in a speaker card?
None received.
Thank you so much. Dr. Valori, the floor is yours.
Well, the representatives for the current year are.
Well, the representatives for the current year are Member Vickers and Member Perry. And Dr. Kelly is an alternate. My understanding is that Member Vickers would like to continue, but understands that someone else would like to also sit on the board. So the question, I guess, is Dee, do you have an interest in continuing and continuing as a representative and?
Yes, I would love to continue. Very passionate about this area. And I think Jan sent a great, great job as well. She's got so much background. She's really valuable.
Jim, do you want to continue to serve as an alternate? Does that work for everybody to continue that process for the year? I see you had Bobbin up and down, so. Well, there you. Vote and be good to go. That was an easy one.
Give him a motion that Member Vickers and Member Perry remain as the representatives and Dr. Kelly is an alternate.
I move approval.
Okay, I'll second. We don't need a roll call vote, right? Okay.
Oh, yes.
Yes. All in favor? Okay. No one opposed? Motion carries four zero one. And this moves us, that was really easy. This is item thirteen B. Clerk Osborne, have you received a speaker card for those wishing to make public comment on approval of establishment of the annual organizational meeting?
None received.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bellory, the floor is yours.
As we have to do every year, we have a limited window of time that the board can host its annual organizational meeting. And it's required that we approve that date prior to, obviously, that date in December. And so the annual organizational meeting is currently slated for December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Is everyone good with that date? So can I have a motion in a second?
I move approval. Yes.
Work? Okay, all in favor? On post? Okay, motion carries four zero one. And we're moving to thirteen C. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment on approval of resolution number twenty-one dash twenty LBSDs adopting a conflict of interest code, which supersedes all other conflicts of interest codes and amends previously adopted resolutions?
None received.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bellory, the floor is yours.
This is simply something we have to do every year when we make any kind of changes to our conflict of interest code. And so we are amending our conflict of interest code to add additional staff that have come on. And so it's for your consideration. Oh, and delete one, yes. We have some changes, so.
Resolution. Can I have a motion? If there are no questions, can I have a motion in a second?
Move approval.
Okay. Victoria, can you do a roll call?
Isabella?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry? President Normandin?
Yes, so motion carries four zero one. Or move into fourteen A consent calendar. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment speaker cards for the consent calendar?
None received.
Thank you. Do I, what members wish to make a comment or ask a question about anything on the consent calendar? Or when I say members, I do mean you as well. So first, just so you know, if you can always jump in, okay. If not, then can I have a motion to approve all items C through S? Thank you. Awesome. Okay.
Yes.
All in favor? Good. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries four one zero. Thank you. Said Jan, but no. Get this moves us to fifteen A. Per board by law ninety-three twenty-two, any board member or member of the public may request the matter within the jurisdiction of the board be placed on the agenda of a regular meeting. Request shall be submitted in writing to the superintendent or designated with supporting documents and information, if any. There were three items requested to be added to the agenda. Public comment will be allowed for each item, three minutes per speaker and twenty minutes per total item. So this brings us to A. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards on request from Laguna Beach community member regarding lack of transparency of LBSD board discussion making, decision-making processes?
None received.
Okay. Thank you then. Let me see my. Sorry, I had a note on here. Okay. Is there any member that is expressing interest in discussing this item?
I just wondered. Who, who is this? If this gentleman was informed beforehand that this was going to be on the agenda?
I mean, he was, but yes, and once it's on the agenda, though, it is public, public can come and make comment as well. So once it's on the agenda, it becomes part of the greater public. It's not an individual person's.
Right, but, but the greater public didn't find out until Monday. I mean, and did he know it was going to be on the agenda this month in November or December or January? I mean.
His original request was that it was on the agenda every month. So we had to get back information back to my attorney that you, you can't do that. You can just make a request. And then once the board decides to do something, then or not, or whatever it is, then the item doesn't come back on the agenda because the board then has made a decision.
But how can we make a decision if we don't hear from the person? And how can we, if this person didn't know it was going to be on the agenda this month? Because I know I've asked for things before and been told that it would be, it would be on the agenda. But when it fit into the agenda.
That's how it works. Yes, that's what the law states.
So it, and I know we've canceled other agenda items. I mean, because.
There could have been a motion during the changing of the agenda at that time by any board member to have moved the item.
And. Well, I don't want to move the item. I don't really know that much about the item. I just think that we shouldn't expect somebody that didn't know it was going to be on this and to, you know, wherever he said he, wherever he is, to fly back when he didn't know it was going to be, when it was going to be this week.
Just for clarification, these are items that are requested to be added to the agenda for board consideration, not for a community member to present topics or whatever it might be. So just, it's for your consideration. So at this time, it's really, does the board wish to talk about this? That item simply added, there's no presentation. It would have been.
I thought, I thought it was like a presentation.
No.
So, so what is, what is the procedure for somebody to request an item be put on the agenda that they would like to present on?
They, they can't make a presentation. They can speak for three minutes on item.
They would be public comment on three minutes on agenda items. And that would be it, just like any other.
Hmm, I, I've seen it done differently in other school districts.
That's not the status of how it works.
Right, that's not what the law is. And that's not how we've been following the law. That's not how it works. So you have to be staffed to actually make a presentation. So he, the, anyone would have three minutes to speak on all of those items.
Well, I just saw one in the Capistrano district where a board member put an item on the agenda and the board member presented on it.
Board members aren't limited to three minutes on a topic. It would, the community is, however. The board member is a board member, is an elected official. It's a different status for how that functions versus a member of the community.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, so to just be clear, so if a member of the public requests an item be put on the agenda, they don't get to talk about it or present it. We just look at it and decide if we want to hear anything about it.
The public would come and they could make comment for three minutes on each of these items. And we could have a discussion of whether we wanted to hear more about it or we wanted more information.
But without having the person be able to even have their three minutes, isn't it hard for us to determine if we want to hear any more about it or not?
That's up for us to determine, to find consensus. I remember Kelly's about to, I remember Osborne's going to speak for me.
Well, I, I appreciate the request to put things on the agenda. And I appreciate the work of the board president and, and the superintendent to agendize the items. But I also don't see anybody else here now that we have, I, I think, very gracefully agendized an item fairly quickly after it was requested by a community member. And there's no other people here to make a public comment on that. It's on the agenda. So I was expecting perhaps even if that one person wasn't here, that the issue might be larger than one person from our community. And since I don't see any other comment cards, and we didn't even receive any other written comments because it was agendized, I just have to think that this isn't something that the board needs to spend any more time on because I don't see any other community input on this agendized item. So that's my take on this situation.
I agree with that, Clerk Osborne. And I thought it was important to leave it because other people had seen that it was on the agenda and to give them a chance to talk about it, but no one came. So this is one person wanting to talk about it.
Right. But I thought previously we have come and decided not to, to have, hear an item on the agenda because of.
And that could have been a motion, that could have been a motion at the beginning to change the agenda. And no one chose to do that.
We would have moved, when we moved to adopt the agenda, we would have made a change to the agenda. So, for example, say Dr. Mayberry fell ill this afternoon and couldn't make his reports. We would make a motion to change the agenda. The agenda's already been published to the public. So we, to be transparent to our, to our community, we have to move to change the agenda in the public format. We can't just change the agenda after it's been published. So we would have had to do that beginning of the meeting.
Correct. And I did, I wasn't sure who was here at the beginning of the meeting either, who was coming to speak to what. So I thought there were people in the audience that were committed to it.
I didn't know either.
This sounds like there's consensus to move on to the, is there consensus to move on to the next item?
Well, I guess, I guess so. But I, I mean, I'd like to say I think this person should be able to present whatever it is he wants to present at some time. I don't think that we.
It doesn't, it doesn't work that way, Member Perry. That's not how the law works. It's not their, it's not their represent, they asked it something to put on the, on the agenda. It is on the agenda. Other members of the public can speak to it. No one else has come to speak to it. He didn't, that person didn't come to speak to it. And he can speak at a non-agenda item in the future. He can make comment just as he has in the past.
Okay.
Can I write that he could come to any meeting and talk at the time when things that are on the agenda?
Any regular business.
He could, he could, he could deal with these three issues at the next meeting or at any meeting.
Well, not any meeting, but any regular business meeting.
Right, thank you.
Not an organizational meeting, not a special meeting, just any regular business meeting.
And so if he had three items, could he come up and speak three times?
No, he has three minutes to speak about things that aren't on the agenda. As any other community member does.
Okay.
And also as community members that send us emails and videos and let me share whatever he would like with us.
Okay. And so we, if, it just seems like we would let somebody know that something's going to be on the agenda so they could make their plans accordingly. I, it, when it can be on any agenda for three months and somebody has, is, would schedule their plans accordingly, it seems like we should let them know. But I guess we don't do it that way.
I, I had intention of emailing them on Friday, but I was gone on Wednesday because I have family emergency. So, and I flew back this morning for this. And I'm turning right back around after this meeting and leaving and flying back out soon.
I don't have his email with me, but my recollection is that he knew it was going to be today. And his plans had changed. And that, that was the reason why he was asking for it to move to another time.
He didn't, he, he was in Connecticut, Connecticut, maybe? He was somewhere.
He was going to Connecticut, I thought.
He's in Connecticut. And he didn't know until whenever the agenda came out or he looked at it maybe Tuesday or something.
Okay, I, I understand.
So. I just like to be open to the public. I like them to be able to, to put items on the agenda, to speak and to not tell them that their item is even coming up just feels like closing doors to me.
I interpreted differently. We took a community members' request and agendized three different items on a, on an issue that we hadn't received much public comment on. We've heard it many times before, but I was open to hearing other ideas and other comments. And we don't have any tonight. So I, I look, I look at it a different way.
Trying to agendize items for the board's consideration, it is the board's agenda. So if you're agendizing items for the board's consideration and really going through, you know, that much work, that you would follow the outcome of the agenda when it comes out. And based on the time tonight, being that it's almost nine o'clock, the board is dealing with a lot of work and business. So I actually think that we really extended a lot of grace and courtesy by putting that, those three items on the agenda, of which we have nobody here to speak on. So I recommend that this board move on. We can go through the same process on the next two items. But I, I appreciate the, the perspectives of the board. And I think as we deal with this in the future, we can fine tune it. But I think we need to move on.
Agreed. And I don't think we've had, well, not in my experience, we have had a member of public that's actually come to when they put something on the agenda. They haven't come and spoken to it, they just put it on there. I, I did think he might want to, but. So, but we can fine tune or look at how we deal with that. I agree with you. This takes us to the next item, because there's no consensus on having a discussion around that topic. The next item is a request for, from Laguna Beach, a community member regarding a critical race theory-based teaching and contracts in LBSD. Clerk Osborne, are there any speaker cards?
No.
Thank you. Again, this is one of those, one of the three items. And I'm looking to see if there's consensus to have a discussion about this item. So we're going to move on. The next item is C, and it's a request from Laguna Beach community member regarding needs of community discussion of proposed capital spending projects. I'm looking for consensus to see if there's any discussion on this. Oh, I'm sorry, is there any public comment? Sorry.
And no public comments received?
Okay, thank you. And is there consensus to have a discussion?
A question. Aren't we going to get more feedback on that later and somebody could discuss things then?
More feedback on what? We have public meetings. We have public meetings on them. We, we just, yeah, we just had meetings, we just had meetings on it.
Right, but I mean, so there's lots of chances if somebody wants to.
Yes, as well as every time is a regular business meeting. You could talk about it on agenda items. And when it's on the agenda, you can talk about it on the agenda. You can also email at any time. You could fill out the form, public comment form before any meeting. You could fill that out like we got, when we get, we all get a copy of the same thing. There's many times and many ways for the public to communicate. And they also could communicate directly with Jeff about that and, you know, whatever their interests are around it.
And, and is there a reason that we don't allow, now don't allow the public to call in?
We, that's all, that's not on the agenda, so I will.
But he could have called in if we allowed that.
I'll briefly say that we had a discussion about it and we agreed because of the technology, that wasn't something we did well. Like when you called in, there was horrible feedback and I just had to keep turning and muting. It doesn't work well, doesn't work well for our technology. And we, as a board, gave direction that that wasn't something we're doing in a meeting before we.
Did I miss that meeting?
No, you were in the meeting.
We are on topic.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Clerk Osborne. Okay, and there's no, and there's no consensus moving forward on item three, this third one either. Very asset, didn't I? Yes. Okay. Okay. Moves us to the next item sixteen, governor, governance action. Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for those wishing to make public comment regarding the second reading or approval of the board policies in the four thousand series?
None received.
Thank you so much. On September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, we held a special meeting to review and discuss policies in the four thousand series. Last meeting, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, policies were presented for a first reading. And so I'm looking for a motion in a second. And so, I'm looking for a motion, a second to approve these in the second reading.
Still moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Bill? Do you want to vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, opposed, one, motion carries four zero one. And, I'm going to get to the next group. This brings us to sixteen B, Clerk Osborne, have you received any speaker cards for this wishing to make public comment regarding the first read of board policies in the 5,000 series?
None received.
Okay, on November second, twenty twenty one, we have a special meeting to review and discuss policies in the 5,000 series. May, I have a motion to waive second reading on the policies listed for retirement and approve them for retirement at this time. Okay?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Dean, a bit, Perry, a bit, didn't she, yeah, and then Kelly's, remember, Kelly? Sorry. It was a Clerk Osborne, see, the clerk part really helps, different term. Yeah, thanks for the motion, the second. Then that brings us to the next part, we're, oh, we didn't take a vote, I thought I did, all in favor? Did we take this? Oh, because Izzy said yes, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, so the eyes, so carries four zero one. Okay. I'm going to the second part of this where we have the other approval. And then for the next series, I motion that we bring BP five one four, five point one two, which is the search and seizure, and BP five one four, five point one one, questioning apprehensive by law enforcement, back to workshop, and then the rest of them that we move forward to second reading and approval on the December sixteenth meeting, and I was hoping to get a second on that.
And that?
And then, any discussion? Yeah, five one. Five one, three, two, right? My, my motion, a motion that we bring BP five one, three, two? Okay, BP five one four, five point one two, BP five one four, five point one one, back to workshop. And then the rest of them, they're listed below, we'll bring back for a second reading on December sixteen, twenty twenty one. Do that, okay?
Yes.
All in favor? Opposed? Here is four zero one. And this moves us to seventeen A, Governance Reporting. I'm going to start with board reports, and Clerk Osborne, I'm going to start with you.
Wonderful, thanks President Normandin. My board report for the last thirty days is that I attended the Community Coalition Meeting on October nineteenth. I participated in a farm tour at the ranch with Mr. Dixon, Dr. Sessbarde, and Mrs. Durand. I listened to the seven-hour FDA call regarding the approval of the five through eleven-year-old vaccine. On October twenty sixth, I attended the Orange County School Boards and AXA Dinner on October twenty seventh with Dr. Raloria. I attended a debrief meeting on the District Office Facilities Planning on October twenty ninth. I participated in the board policy workshops on the student policies of the five thousands. And I also attended Thurston Sports Swap and the Thurston PTA Meeting. And I attended the School Power Trustees Meeting last night on November seventeenth, a couple of updates from the School Power Meeting for my fellow board members. The high school teacher, Mrs. Benson, presented on the Flow Project, which we heard about tonight. She also was looking for a call-out to any community volunteers that were present in the nineteen ninety-three fires that would be interested in being interviewed by students for the writing projects that are planned in the spring. So, please let other community members know about that prior to, Mrs. Benson? Yeah, and you can contact her at her district email address. But I really enjoyed hearing from her about the assemblies that they did this past month, the common read that they're planning for January, and then the writing projects that are planned for the spring. So, another important update I heard from School Power Trustees was on their Family Resource Center project planned for the School Power Facility. They have plans to include a contracted licensed social worker and a staff family engagement coordinator, so adding two additional people to their operation, and maybe making some minor interior improvements to their space, which is a district-owned space to have it be a little more welcoming. So, that was really interesting, it was really nice to be with their trustees. And I'm very much looking forward to the completion of the field following winter break here at Thurston. I know the students are really looking forward to it. I love seeing the kids walking up to Altamina Laguna Park, I feel like that's like a jailbreak, they get out of the boundaries of the school and everybody's smiling, but I know they're also going to be happy to be having PE on campus. And I really wanted to extend my sincere thanks to the district staff for opening up our school sites to parent volunteers. I know that that was no small feat in trying to keep our school site safe while welcoming back parent volunteers. They've been inundated with, I think we saw on our board report, close to two hundred parents wanting to come onsite to volunteer. So, sincere gratitude for those efforts, and thank you very much.
Okay, no, okay, Member Perry? Oh, wow. Okay, go ahead, Member Perry. I'm sorry, you lost your house in the fur.
Okay, I attended the memorial for a beloved colleague and teacher, Suzie Clapp, who I know, Member Vickers also knew, who taught at top of the world for thirty-nine years. And it was, it was wonderful, her daughters Molly and Colby put it on, and it was great to see so many people there. And we all wished we could hear Suzie laugh again. I was fortunate to attend Women, Women Water and the Environment, and I wished, you know, some high school students could have come too, the Grace Napolitamo, who is, has been in Congress for over thirty years, and we call her the Water Woman, she just got a great, what am I trying to say? She just got a, a great pass on clean water and helping with water infrastructures. There's a woman that, if any, named Andrea Leon Grossmont, who's the director of ASUL, which is the Latin-based, she, she works with Mexico as well as the US, but works with all kinds of students that speak Spanish on keeping our oceans clean, and she would be happy to have any help. I went to the Joint Fiscal Committee, and Jeff, as always, gave us wonderful background on how it all got started, kind of during the bankruptcy of, and I don't think we did anything wrong, but that we started then, so everybody'd be more up to snuff. It was more our Robert Bob Citron that had some problems, and maybe he should have had more people watching him on his committee. And anyway, Jeff did a great job also explaining all the, all the codes. I attended the high school PTA meeting, and Dr. Spassard did a great job working with the parents on improving communication. The parents were very excited to be asked their opinions, and they had a lot of opinions. And they're hopeful, though, Dr. Spassard talked about it being a three-year plan, and they're hoping some of the things are easy enough that they could be implemented sooner. But I know she's gathering lots of information, and they felt very good about being asked. I also attended the Almoro PTA Meeting, and they, the Boo Blast isn't a fundraiser for them, but because people were so excited to come out this year, they made twenty, over twenty-two thousand dollars, so that was great. And they changed their, you know, colonial days to harvest days. They're having a lot of the same stations, like candle-making and so on, that's great for kids to get hands-on experience. But it, it's tough because they didn't know if they could do it or not, and getting volunteers at the last minute, it, it might, it'll probably be a little toned down, that the students will have some of those experiences. I'm very excited that their garden is getting going again, and big thanks to Kelly for helping them out and giving them some expertise, they're, they're gung-ho to at least get something going. Yeah, they really are. I also attended the Boys and Girls Club Breakfast. The, let's see, I attended the opening of the new College and Career Center at Capa Valley, it's huge. They have an animatronic in front, a big computer bar, it looks like a college lounge, really. And their idea is to have both a career counselor and a college counselor both there because kids sometimes like to do both, they want to get a, get a certification so that they can work through college and make more money, and so, that, that looked really great. I went to the Vital Link Pedal Event with Dr. Brian Dozer, and he didn't even smell bad after he, after that first part riding to Laguna, I had to stand by him. But he told me he changed his jersey because it was pretty bad. But anyway, I love pushing the community college. So, many people don't think about those kids really needing money too, and, you know, we learn about a lot of them living in their cars because they don't have money for housing. So, I am thrilled that he's providing scholarships for those kids. I also, let's see, I did that encouraging civil behavior through board policy seminar, and then I've gone to two of the Orange County Department of Ed workshops for visual and performing arts because we didn't have anyone who could go. First one, we talked about implementing the two thousand nineteen state standards for the arts, which, because of COVID, I don't think anybody got really going on implementing them. So, there were ideas about that, and then the last one, we did Universal Design and the Arts, which was really interesting and fun to work with people because the ideas come a lot faster. And, I think that's it.
Thank you for your report, all of you. I, I see my notes between, I attended the facilities debriefing, found it, found it very helpful and insightful. I still think the preschoolers there would be fun, right? And then, I also attended Equity Gathering, and after this, Ed Elements had met with students, and, you know, they were talking about how articulate they are, how they're very aware of what's going around themselves and how it affects them and how it affects their peers, and got to talk about things they were concerned about on campus, and, you know, ways for to get support around different topics. But they were very impressed at how articulate they were, for their ages, even the fifth graders, right? And so, that was, was wonderful feedback, and more will come, and, and the surveys went out, families and students. They're going to go out, okay, I was like, I lost track of dates, okay, so, so that's all being fine-tuned to go out to start that part of it. But the, this, the students also, we had students who came to the gathering, and it was great to, one, see people in person, but two, to really hear from the parents and the students about the Equity Work, it was, it was wonderful. And there will be, there's, there's much more rolling out, that's public-facing, you know, to their families and the students. And we had some people who didn't want to participate, but it was a very small group of people that didn't want their kids or they didn't want to participate. And that is all I have for my report. And so, that brings us to Superintendent Report in the Governance Section.
No report tonight.
Thank you. That brings us to eighteen, which is our next regular meeting. The next scheduled business meeting will be held in person at Thurston Middle School in the library, like it is now, on December sixteenth. It's our organizational meeting. And I move to adjourn this meeting, if I can have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And as a reminder, BB ninety-two hundred, when we adjourn, the board is no longer seated, and thus, we have no individual authority until we're seated again. Yes, Bill, would you like to vote on adjouring?
Sure.
So, yes? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, and it carries four zero one, we are adjourned, and the time is nine oh one PM.